Mic check, one, two. Mic check. Check, one, two. Check, check. One more time. Sound good? Right. Check, check.
This is the last one? Oh, okay, we've, uh... Yes!
Better anyway.
Look at, look at how that glides.
Is tonight's special meeting? Because it says you have to be present at the special meeting.
It did. I, I think I have enough. Would you, uh, would you put that in Cheryl's box? Um, in Cheryl's box this morning. Police report. What false police report? Oh, that's a thank you from the scouts.
Oh, okay. So what am I talking about?
No, we're forty-five hundred feet up, so it's... Like it cold, it looks like it's probably in the middle of the night. Maybe forty, but it's something about...
There's no nation back to say nothing.
The winter and... Three twenty-seven.
I don't want to hear about your board.
Maybe some separate. And we have change.
Our day.
You ever been to the quarter? Above my house. All, uh, strictly airspace. Where you... Die bomb. I got a whole lot, yes.
You buy what they...
Uh, man with bomb by the whole town. Not gay, uh, masses, minus masses.
Are you buying you want?
We're, no, we're not buying you want. I'm right outside too. Literally right outside too.
Yeah, pressure.
They've got a whole bunch of...
And they live there.
They have plenty of tanks.
We need to proceed forward. We need to.
That's, yeah.
You have a choice.
All I have is...
I like it.
And they have cat line that are like way bigger than me.
Go ahead.
I look forward to getting that signed over.
Uh, don't. So it's calling.
Okay, call the meeting in order. Attorney Drole.
Mayor Alaba.
Here.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Here.
Small.
Here.
Chybe.
Here.
Buckingham.
Here.
Jim, you gotta light the mics up. The button next to it, other side.
That's true.
Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Are you good?
We'll get, we'll get this.
You'll get it.
Not bad yet. Okay, let's all rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reminder of everyone, please turn off your cell phones. Approval of the minutes.
Moved by Commissioner Kaminsky that the minutes from the council meeting held November fifth, 2025, be approved and placed on file.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Clerk will read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small.
Aye.
Chybe.
Nay.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck.
Aye.
Lighten the mic up. Mic's blinking green. Lighten them up.
Uh, hang on a minute.
You're good, Mike, just stay there. Oh, hit it again.
Yeah.
Right.
Gotta turn red.
Red's good.
If you hit the button, you might turn yourself off. Uh... See here. Next is public comments. I want to do a reminder for public comments. Three minutes per person to stand up and speak one time. Have a timer up here. When the timer goes off, please cease and take your seat. If there's more than one to speak on the same topic, please pick a spokesman. Members of the audience shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. When the council's in the middle of taking a vote or other discussion, interruption from the audience will not be tolerated. And, uh, no personal attacks. If, uh, these are pretty simple rules, so people should be able to follow them.
Um, I have a point of order, please, in clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is criticism of an elected official a personal attack?
Are you asking for a raise?
I am, yes.
No.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Oh, light her up. Hit the button. Middle, middle button. No, you got a question. Now, hit the button. There we go.
There you go, okay.
Um, and I have a, I, I have one more point of, um, clarification. If something is documented, uh, stating something that is documented, if, even if unpleasant, would that be a personal attack?
I think it depends on what the document is and...
Okay.
What the nature of the, um, in combination with the document and the statement is. So I think that would be...
Okay. So if there were a document that was submitted to the city of Marcellus and viewed as, uh, and paid for by the city, it would still be a question?
I, I, I think I'd just have to see it. I don't think I can answer that generally.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Canlin.
Sure.
Okay, anyone wish to address the council? Denise? Go up there, make sure that mic's turned on, Denise.
Hello? Yeah. It's really loud. Okay, I'm gonna stand way back here. Um, so I haven't been to one of these in a while. Life has kind of, uh, kicked me in the teeth, but I'm still wanting to know why we don't have a donation box, um, for the wall. We have one for the ambulance service within the building. We have one for the museum within the building, but we don't have one for the wall. So if it's a matter of not being allowed on city property, why are those and that one's not? Why are we discriminating? Um, I would, I would like to try to figure that out. I know it hasn't been a topic of discussion because I haven't been here for a while, but, um, that is a question that I have. Last time it was brought up, it was stated that they were following, um, advice of attorney. Um... I don't know if you've had more time to look into that.
I, I can certainly answer that we have reached out to the, um, organizations that are involved with the conflict wall to try and schedule a meeting, um, to get it back in the forefront of people's minds. And I think that the donation box can be addressed as part of those meetings. You know, I sent a meeting, uh, or an email out a couple of weeks ago, um, and I don't know, it's very possible I missed it, but I was waiting to hear back to see if we could coordinate a date and a time. I'm not sure if anybody else has...
I haven't seen anything.
Didn't come back yet. So I think that would be the first step.
Did we have to have a meeting to have the others?
To have the others what?
The other donations that are within the building?
I'm not familiar...
But that's what I'm getting at, it's a discriminatory issue then, because we're allowing it for some and not for all.
And, and I've raised that issue, that you want to be consistent on how you have a policy regarding donation boxes.
So you have advised to be consistent in that?
Correct.
Okay, and it's just not happening?
I'm not sure what the donation boxes are that are in the museum or, um, I'm, I'm not aware of any other donation.
It's not a donation box, they're QR codes?
I think the QR codes I've advised are fine.
So it's okay to put a QR code and say, hey, donate, but it's not okay to put a box?
Correct. We didn't want to have a box on, uh, public property.
Okay, so if they...
And I've advised that the policy be consistent across the board.
Okay.
My advice was to not have any donation boxes or donations or QR codes, because how do you distinguish what is appropriate for each organization that might be seeking donations? So that was our recommendation. But I know that when we had talked with the committee, we were going to discuss, was there some other avenues that we could look at? Um, because everybody agreed, uh, that, that they like the wall and what the purpose of the wall is and what they're trying to accomplish with the wall. So that, build a plan to have a meeting and try and discuss how to handle, the best way to handle that.
Can we get that done? Because it's been about five months since it was removed.
Certainly, I'll circulate another email.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Denise. Melissa?
All right. First thing I want to talk about is this. It is the price list. Everything, every seller in Timbers Edge, what they originally paid for their property, when they bought it, when they sold it, and a profit amount over here. Um, this apparently has been sent around to many, many people, and we've received a lot of, um, harassment, I would say, over it. Um, but I, I'm just kind of curious why, why this was put together and disseminated. We've already talked to Constellation. We know it didn't come from them. And I imagine you guys will be getting a call from Constellation regarding it also. Um, I'm guessing there will, no answer, no reason why it was disseminated? Okay.
All right, hang on a minute, we're, we're trying, uh...
Come up with a good story?
Okay, please stop the timer. Uh, point of order, please stop the timer.
You got other side.
Okay. I took it upon myself to make the list. It all came from GIS. It's public information. Anybody can get it. It's online, and that's where it came from.
Okay. Um, regardless of it being public information, to put it in a list like this and spread it around to the town as if we've done something wrong?
I didn't spread it around to the town.
Well, someone did, and someone pretty much told the town, we were being greedy. And it doesn't take into account anything that anyone put into their homes? Like, it just gives a profit amount based on our purchase price? Like, I know someone bought their house for thirty-five thousand, but then threw in another three hundred thousand, so that profit margin is pretty wrong. And I think what you did here was try to make yourself look good and try to make us look bad after all of the harassment intimidation that we've dealt with.
Information that anybody can get.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Well, the second, uh, topic that I want to discuss is the FOIA response I received yesterday requesting a deposit of two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars for paper copies. Um, you guys probably got my reply to that. Um, I've also filed a PAT complaint on that, but I think those copying fees are exorbitantly, it's a, it's a lot, considering most of the documents are in digital format. Um, but I actually was very surprised that Ms. Strotner was the one that sent this out, because most FOIAs that come from the city clerk are less than professional and more like high school newsletters. Um, I guess we shouldn't expect much, because, you know, as the mayor said, um, let's see, what was his exact words? Uh, oh, no, this one's just about him using foul language and calling employees inappropriate names. Um... Let's see, punching, uh, uh, no, that's not about the city clerk, that's still about the mayor. Leslie Hart was creating a toxic work environment. Um...
Okay, Melissa, I'm not going to allow you to attack the city clerk. You're not going to attack any of our employees.
It's public dissent, First Amendment right. Um, the mayor spent quite some time detailing issues with Leslie Hart as an employee. I asked him who she reported to. So my hope is that maybe someone will take a look at this HR report, the FOIAs that she's been sending out, that she's been lying on, and maybe look at terminating her for the benefit of the town, because she's costing you guys money.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Please do not attack our clerk.
It's not an attack.
Your employee should be subjected to...
This is my, this is public comments. I would suggest that maybe you get yourself in order. I'm not attacking the clerk. I am making a political statement. Are you going to deny me that?
Your time is up.
Considering the TRO, I would suggest you watch yourself.
Please take a seat.
Is that your heart pacemaker?
Sounds like it's a...
Do we need to call nine-one-one?
It's unfortunate we even have to use it, but when people...
Mr. Tim Johnovich, I'm sorry, what did you say?
No, I just said, does anybody need anything? I heard a beep, like, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I think we're, I think we've got everything set.
Did you, did you, did he recognize me? According to ordinance, he has to recognize me.
Yeah, state your name.
My name's Scott Demianovitz. All right, uh, Melissa Small's had a nice conversation with you, thank you. Um, Ed Chybe, if you put that list together, I'm, I'm just going to straight up tell you, you're an idiot. My number's wrong, and several other numbers are wrong, but either or, that's neither here nor there, you're, you just, I don't know what to tell you. But I'm here today to talk about our city clerk filing a false harassment complaint against me on April twenty-second of earlier this year. She contacted the police on April twenty-second. We don't know how she contacted them, because the police report that was made by Detective Weiss only says he was advised of a complaint. And in that police report, it does not even reference even talking to the person who complained to the police, or even the person that was harassed. So if you say you're being harassed and you call the cops, you would think they would talk to you, and that would be in the report. But Leslie Hart's address, name, and everything, it's not that it's redacted, it's just not there, it's gone. It's, it's like it never exactly happened. And, uh, I never would have even found this complaint unless the mayor, him right there, decided to get up and tell people that all these people file harassment complaints against me. And, but that's actually the only harassment complaint I found against everywhere around here. Um, but anyways, now today, I was able to, and also the body cam footage when they went back to interview her neighbor, which is Larry Lewis, the liar, we call him now. He, uh, he, uh, that, we found his house on the body cam footage, and when the officer went up there to go talk to her. Little, and that body cam footage was not even tagged in the investigation. I had to FOIA the whole day, the whole day's worth of video and find that, and it is the most blurred out picture in my life I've ever seen. Has anybody watched the news and seen a blurred out, uh, di- uh, body cam video? Have you ever seen one that wrecked? No, 'cause the police of Marcellus, Detective Weiss is a liar, and he falsified that police report to help cover up Leslie Hart's false complaint. And I have the proof. Where's my shit? I got my, I got my bank statement.
Okay, Denise?
Oh, I apologize. Stop my time, stop my time, stop my time, stop my time.
I've, I've told you about...
Yes.
...first before.
Yes, Catlin. I, I understand, Catlin. I, I understand, I apologize for that, ma'am. I try not, you, you know I try to watch my manner of language, but unrespectfully, I'm not being respectful. Okay, here's my bank statements from that day proving that in fact I was in Arizona. I was not at Leslie Hart's house. Why would Leslie Hart wait two days after me being at her house harassing her? Why would she wait two days to call? Anybody's going to call right then and there, right then and there. Leslie Hart is nothing but a liar and filed a false police report, and the Marcellus Police Department is getting sued. Buckingham, because you signed off on it, you're getting sued now too. Detective Weiss is getting sued.
Okay, Scott, Scott, your time's up. Sit down. Thank you.
You can also be respectful to me, sir.
Todd?
Ignorant.
Mayor. Uh, Mr. Tim Johnovich, thank you. Uh, Mayor, let's continue on with, if there's any other public comments, please.
Okay, and then we'll get on to what we should be doing all along. Uh, number one.
Moved by Commissioner Kaminsky that the accounts payable for the...
Jim, you gotta lighten up the mics. No. The far one. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. You're good.
Moved by Commissioner Kaminsky, the accounts payable for the first half of November in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-six cents be approved, and a warrant be drawn on the city treasury for the several amounts.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, excuse me, if I can't rattle off real quick, it just came from Morris Hospital, but we'll, we'll try to get it done. Advanced, uh, information mapping system, GIS mapping, six thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. B and G Electric, the parking lot electrical work, seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Brennan Tag Mid-South Aqua Mad Fluoride, Jason Ricks's department, five thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and twelve cents. Gas and Novan Associates, uh, refrigeration samples, twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Marcel's Sheet Metal, uh, fall and winter, uh, prevent maintenance, uh, four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Marcel's Public Library, this is their property tax distribution, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, twenty-five cents. There you go, Jeff, put that in your book. Morton Salt, uh, Balk Safety Salt, seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars, seventy-five cents. Uh, Nix Emergency Lighting and More Vehicle, vehicle retrofits for one of our newer squad cars, four thousand, fifty dollars and five cents. Any questions?
No other discussion? Clerk will read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Chybe?
No.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Number two.
Moved by Commissioner Kaminsky that the payroll for the first half of November in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and one cent be approved, and a warrant be drawn on the city treasury for the several amounts.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, it's pretty typical payroll, Mayor.
Okay.
We didn't get any snow yet.
Tried. Uh, clerk will read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Chybe?
Epstein.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say that, uh, the mayor and I attended, uh, the Bowling Brook, uh, CHO, uh, hospital, state meeting to, uh, approve the, uh, additional ICUs. And, uh, it was a pretty big eye-opening. A lot of people talked, I respect everybody that has an opinion, but I still say at the end of the day, we're elected officials, and if we don't have any ICUs and people can't go to Ottawa, that that's going to put a strain on our EMS system and ambulance guys, so, and fire departments. So I just think at this point is, I'm very disappointed, and I hope they reconsider. I know they're moving everything to their Peru facilities, but I, I, I'm praying that they, they do something back in Ottawa in the next near future, so that's it, Mayor.
Okay, I don't know, uh, I had this on my sheet, but as long as we're on it, I don't know what the next step is going to be, or if there is going to be a next step.
I don't, I don't know.
If they're going to appeal it, if they're going to challenge it in court, we'll just have to wait and see, but we fell one vote shy. It's, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is, as they say.
How many public meetings were there in consideration of that? Do we have a ballpark?
Well, I mean, I, I'm not officially, I can't tell you, like, exactly, but I know they had one where they presented all their evidence, and then it took them like nine months to put another meeting together to have the packet of the nays versus the a's, so, and that was a whole, uh, the whole long drag-out party.
I think I was at three at the school.
Yeah, but those are, I mean, he's talking about state meetings.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they, yeah, they turned it in once. It got pushed back, and then it, they...
Yeah, one of the state meetings was a central school, then a few months ago, I was scheduled to go to Peoria to talk, and they canceled it.
Right.
Scheduled this one, so this second one, I think.
Yeah, this is the second meeting they put together with the state IDP.
So multiple meetings on important issues are wise?
Yeah, so when they do these meetings in Bowling Brook, every, every nine, uh, nine, nine to ten weeks, it's multiple facilities, not just OS.
Sure.
So it was a pretty nice eye-opening procedure on how that all process works, so it was a good trip on my, besides losing. I know, Buck.
Yeah. Uh... Anything else?
I'm sorry, ma'am, that's it.
Uh, Commissioner Small?
Um, don't have much, just slow down on Broadway still, that seems to be an issue that people have brought to my attention in the school zones especially, um, with the buses and the kids crossing. Please just slow down, mind your speed over there, and, um, keep an eye out for the little ones. They like to dodge in and out of the road, especially when they're crossing, and we just want to make sure that all of our learners are safe.
That it?
Yeah.
You got number two?
Moved by Commissioner, moved by Commissioner Small that Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty, a resolution authorizing a mutual release and settlement agreement with Carl Echols be adopted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I'll second that, Mayor.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I can explain if you'll turn me on.
Uh, you gotta hit the button first.
Oh, I do.
And then, there you go.
There we go.
Perfect. Uh, yes, it's, uh, was stated by the motion, this is a mutual release and settlement agreement with, uh, Mr. Echols, and, uh, it was the recommendation of Corporation Council, uh, following, uh, mediation that we settle for essentially the cost of defense.
Is there a non-disclosure agreement as part of the settlement?
I believe they did sign everything, that there can be no information released and/or obtained regarding it, as it was a personal matter.
That's almost funny.
Uh, I beg your pardon, sir.
Do you have anything? Oh, clerk read the roll.
In a second, just pull.
Yeah, clerk read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Chybe?
No.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Hit your button, Bucky. All right, Jim, give him, give him hot mic. There you go.
Uh, Commissioner Chybe?
So... There seems to be a level of viewpoint discrimination as to how the rules are enforced regarding personal attacks. At the last meeting, I was explaining how... At the last meeting, I was explaining how I wanted there to be a, uh, multiple public hearings. It wasn't so much that we couldn't have an agreement. When a multi-billion dollar company wants to set up shop, you're really not going to stop them. However, we could've been more open. We could have had multiple public hearings particularly, particularly when people weren't at work. Thought that was a fair statement and I was cut off, and only after I defended myself did the gavel come out. Additionally, after the police report was filed on Mr. Demianovich, I had a city employee come to my employer to make the complaint that I was taking pictures at their house, which was untrue. I immediately sent that information to Commissioner Kaminsky. So, it's just in line with a pattern of retaliation that, um, is extraordinarily unfortunate. Uh, we have a concave mirror up, concave convex, I don't know, concave, let's say concave. Um, I failed physics. Um, however, there is a, there's a mirror up at Wallace and Aurora, um, such that we have that blind curve there.
Oh.
Okay, because of the, because of the fence, so I'm hoping that will ameliorate safety concerns there. So I appreciate the, appreciate that matter. I certainly also would like to, uh, uh, thank the, um, resident who brought to my attention that, um, we could do better with the crosswalks and signage for pedestrians coming into and out of this building. And I will be speaking with, uh, the, um, employees to that effect. Um, and now there's a couple of, uh, matters of paying for the maintenance program for MFT, and if that could be done, I should greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Schab that Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-one, a resolution for BLR one-four-two-two-zero, the twenty-two-five street maintenance be adopted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Schab?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Schab that a change in plans for BLR one-three-two-one-zero for street maintenance, twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero dash zero-zero dash GM adding twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents to the contract be approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
We got, I mean, do we know what was the twenty thousand dollars for? Liven them up. Hit the button, Mike.
Uh, well, drive, well, since, since I'm on, yeah, driveways to the sidewalks, uh, I'd union, 'cause they have sidewalks there, um, as well as shoulders.
Shoulders. It's a, it's a unit price contract, so the contractor gives you a unit price for so much asphalt. You do use more asphalt, the price goes up.
Yeah, I understand.
So the contract went up about, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars. This is a form that's required by IDOT to go in all their paperwork. As I said, there's much, much paperwork involved in this.
Thank you, Michaels.
Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Schab?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Schab that final pay estimate, BLR one-three-two-three-zero, to universal asphalt in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and twelve cents be approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
This goes along with the first two before that. Hang the contractor for what he did.
Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Schab?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye. Commissioner Buckingham?
Yeah, it's got a couple of things. I said, uh, Mike, can you tell us, I meant to ask you earlier, are we done up on Branton Avenue with the retention pond? Is that complete?
It's about ninety-five percent complete. They're working on, uh, doing some seating items and some, um, rip wrap.
All right. That was my first thing. I just want, thank you on that.
And I will say that the rip wrap went way over, we talked about unit prices, so the cost is about, as far as I know right now, about ten thousand dollars more than what the bid was.
It's worth it still.
And they did a lot more seating, too.
Right.
So it looks good.
Actually, I think they might be done, 'cause I seen a lot of rip wrap in there and I seen a lot of that netting they put out, so, unless they got something that isn't visible, I think they're, they might be totally done.
Have we considered putting like some sort of barrier or pylon just in the off chance that somebody drives into it?
We can look into that, but I think as far as the traffic warrants go, and there's a far, a big enough, um, platters.
Yeah, just so, they, I, I have just, I have, I have visions of hold my beer and watch this, so, I mean, if there was like some way to have like a thousand, yeah, I mean, if, if it could be done in a cost-effective way, I'd like us to consider it. It's just...
Are you talking like a guardrail?
Well, either a guardrail or just a couple of blocks or, or like pylons, like they have at like the, uh, at the Target. Again, I'm just talking here, I don't, um, not presuming, you know?
Call them bollards.
What's that?
Bollards.
Yes, sir. I mean, could we like ballpark what that might, might, what that might look like?
Then somebody you want to put in.
Right. Well, the hole's been there since...
Never happened yet. Put it that way.
And actually, um, uh, just so, just so you kind of know where my thinking is, um, in, uh, in my college and just, uh, bear with me, just what's on my brain. Um, my college dug out a lake, made it deeper, um, and someone did, um, fall in and drown. So, um, just, if there's a safety precaution we could take for the sake of limiting liability, I, I would just like us to consider that.
We'll, we'll look into that. Now, as far as falling into a pond or anything...
Yeah, I realize the pylon won't stop that.
Dry.
Yeah.
Get water in it for a little while. Uh, there's a lot of dirt around there. When someone goes off with a car, they're probably gonna sink in the dirt, but we'll look out.
So they'll, they'll die that way.
So they get stuck before they go over the cliff.
Yeah, yeah, and again, and again, just, uh, just that's the genesis of why I have the, why that was in my head, and thank you.
We'll look at it.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else?
Yeah, just a reminder, sooner or later, people, we're gonna get snow. So a reminder about the two-in-snowfall. Chuck, you're, where you look at for your snow routes. And number three, I want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Number one under me.
Moved by Mayor Hollenbeck that the special event permit application for holiday magic lighted Santa parade be approved and the permit fee be waived.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Schab?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye. Uh, City Engineer?
I've got a couple of things, Mayor. Uh, first of all, the city's bond rating has been increased from A to A-plus. There's a many, many months worked by the city clerk and the city treasurer putting all the documents together. I sat in on some of those meetings and they asked, you wouldn't believe, the type of questions. Basically, it comes down to it shows there's no corruption, misappropriation of funds, anything like that, because that ba- rating would not go up if that had happened, or they, and they found any parts of it. Uh, the second thing is what the, what the CPA, who audits our books every year, does the city of Marcell's books first because they know that they're in order. Again, that's a strong, uh, compliment to the city clerk and the city treasurer for keeping those books in order. And one of the things that they do is when they have a question about something, as far as financial goes, they call the auditor, get it straightened out, make sure it's put up the right way or, uh, taken care of, so... And then the final thing is, uh, we've had a meeting today, phone meeting today with our IDOT auditor. He pulled out, uh, six items and four of those are just, um, when we time things, do them MFT resolutions, uh, turning in papers at the end of the year. We haven't had a, uh, audit by IDOT in years, and when they say this, this thing is due within a hundred and twenty days afterwards, they call us and they say, "Hey, where's that report?" So we send the report in, they don't say, "Hey, it should've gone there," whatever. Long story short, I really appreciate this audit. This is really in-depth. He pointed out a lot of things that helped us and have talked about Cheryl and Leslie, and we'll move forward, but changing some procedures, so they're right in, we're no, no violations. It's just, uh, some auditing, uh, procedures, MFT procedures. So, that's it.
Righty, Mike. I, uh, oh, before I speak, City Attorney, do you have anything?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so, along with what Mike says, there's no doubt that our girls at City Hall worked their butts off and they're underappreciated, undervalued. If they didn't have all their ducks in a row and have this paperwork, our, we wouldn't have got our bond rating increased. We wouldn't have passed, uh, I know you think it's funny, Denise, but I'm proud of our people. And I don't know why you think you gotta sit there and do outbursts and clap and... So give, so, so give us the, you know? So, uh... It's, it's, it's hard for us to conduct business when we have dissensions, so, uh, I think that that's, uh, we get that, uh... I've told you how many times. The rules, the rules mean nothing to you.
Mayor, there's no business.
So, the bond rating, the, uh, the, uh, sexual, or, uh, the, uh, not the, uh... The MFT audit. I mean, that, that speaks volume for the work our people do.
And as I said, I've been here a long, long time. It's the first time I've had an audit of this in depth. And, and the auditor told us, he's out of Chicago, he told us that, uh, uh, it was supposed to do it about every five years on, on this in-depth, but, uh, you know, the district office would do audits generally every year. And if they, their findings were minor, minor, minor. Again, these are minor, mostly it's procedural, so, um...
Well...
Again, I'm happy we did it.
Knowing how the state does things, I'm sure they probably at some point in time changed procedures and we didn't know about it.
Well, he says, he says the BLR book is about two thousand pages long with all the regulations.
And we don't, we're, we know that inside and out, right?
Right. He admitted he didn't know it.
Yeah, most of them don't. So a couple other things. I'm very proud of our building. We actually just had a gentleman come in today. He had a pretty lengthy story, but I'll try to shorten it down, but he has some work done on his car and he needed to drive it five hundred miles, so we thought he'd take a ride up here to the wall and see his son's name on the wall. And, uh, so what, he was out and looked at the wall and then he happened to turn around and noticed the front of the building said City of Marcell's. So he come in and he told Cheryl it was so comforting and gratifying to see the city now occupying the building, he knows that the wall and the museum's gonna be safe. He said he was really concerned when the building was empty, if somebody else bought it, you know, what would happen to the stuff, so, uh, that's as far as the wall goes. The Marcell's Nursing Service has really stepped up their services to the public after the move. They have, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have a Move at Marcell's exercise class from nine to eleven. Hopefully someday, when I'm not in Bowling Brook or somewhere else, I can, uh, participate.
Are donations accepted at those meetings?
I'm not sure. Uh, they've had two vaccine clinics and health and wellness clinics. The Grand Ridge Tractor Ride utilized a community room for coffee and donuts and, uh, used the restroom facility, so, you know, the community room stand busy. We're providing services to our residents, our taxpayers, so I'm very proud that, uh, our residents can get something in return out of that. There have been many visitors, uh, come in the City Hall, go through the museum during the week. Everyone I talked to said that we couldn't have planned this building and the location any better if we wanted to. It's just the way everything worked out, so, uh, being a Christian, I'm gonna put it on a higher power that, uh, all this come together for a reason. And then we already talked about the OSF and I'll keep everybody posted if there's gonna be another step. And, uh, wanna wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Buckingham, the city council now adjourned.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Schab?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye. Good night to everyone.